Evening. It's planning board meeting for October 15, 2024. What's the pleasure of the board?
We accept the meeting minutes from the meeting of 10:124.
Second.
Moved in second. We accept the minute, the meeting minutes. Any further discussion? Here or none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? In unanimous, a four.
You weren't here.
I can still vote.
We're going to take the bond reduction out of water because the town engineer has to go to another meeting. Liz, you want to?
Yep. So I went through, there's currently a bond for $242,227.75 for Walter Circle. All of the work has been completed. It actually probably would have been accepted at town meeting if the timing had worked out a little bit better. So they are requesting a 90% reduction on that, which will leave $24,222.85 for any repairs that need to be made due to the winter. So I would recommend approving reduction of the bond.
So moved?
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second. We reduce the bond to...
To just 10%, which is $24,222.85.
So it's going to reduce it $218,490. Right?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? Here or none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? In unanimous, a four.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. Go on.
That was great. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Josh Fiallo with MAPC, Metropolitan Area Planning Council. I'm joined by Michael Pierce, my colleague from the Municipal Services Department this evening. We're happy to be with you all again, ad hoc committee members, for our seventh meeting in our series for the Milford Comprehensive Plan. This evening, we have a briefer agenda, which I think should suit you all well after the holiday. So we'll have a brief review and update over what's happening with our fall community engagement. We have some updates on that, which is great. And have a community survey number two, which has been prepared, and we have a link which is live, and we'll begin circulating that at these meetings that I'll show you in a second. And then our focus topic discussion for this evening is community facilities and services, which is Michael's purview. And we are, as we have done in previous sessions, go through a series of slides with some data and information, and then have a discussion with you all, either, you know, as we go through the slides or afterwards, and get on the same page, hopefully, about community facilities and services. And then just briefly touch on next steps, and we expect that that should be a little quicker than our last few meetings, where we went in detail through the draft vision statement and the draft goals. So we won't be doing as much, covering as much content this evening. Thank you all, ad hoc committee members, for your involvement in this process and dedication to it. We appreciate the time, carving out the time for each of these meetings as well. So we're continuing on the comprehensive plan timeline. We are at the, you know, approaching the center point of the fall session, where we're really focused on those draft vision statement and draft goals, which you all saw, and gathering feedback and ways to strengthen that content. And we have a series of less formal meetings in this month of October, and then we'll have more formal forums in the month of November to achieve that purpose. So just to give you a view into the fall community engagement and a bunch of effort by our team to get these dates and venues and audiences established. So just to recall that we're still really focused on a few things in these outreach efforts, building awareness of the plan. We don't anticipate that, everyone is fully aware that there's Milford Comprehensive Plan going on and update on it. So we'll continue to socialize the plan, and then are specifically seeking feedback on these draft content items, which are in draft form, and we hope will be improved with these conversations. So this, these events are underway. We have had one last week where we did a downtown block walk, where a member of our staff and a member of the community, which is, I believe, Spanish and Portuguese, Brazilian-speaking member of the community, went around to small businesses in the downtown and just invited their curiosity about this process, but also invited them to a small business session, which will occur at the end of this month on the 30th, which will be held at the Chamber of Commerce. So we did, it was both sort of twofold, to have informal conversations in their businesses, but also to invite them to the chamber session. So that was a successful outing. Our colleague, Camille Johnlin, who you, I think many of you met when she presented to you all on economic development, was there, walking through the downtown small businesses for about two hours on the 8th, which was great. She had, she has taken notes from those sessions as well, which our team is benefiting from. Tonight, I dropped off on my way here at the high school, Courtney, who you all know and I've met at previous meetings, to be a part of one of the adult English second-language learner programs, and that's in conjunction with what Elizabeth just left for, for the MVP 2.0 process. So we're also taking notes and involved in those sessions this evening. We have on Friday an open session for, at the library, which will hopefully get people who are at the library anyhow kind of circulating there and can engage with them. But this is also an event which we are promoting online through, we have a flyer, which I'm going to stick up in Town Hall after the meeting here. So anyone that isn't going to be at one of the other events, this is really more of an open call. We view it more as an open office hours, where our members of our team will be present, and we can engage with anyone who's available in the space or stops by. We'll be doing a similar session at the library on the 30th of this month, and that will occur more in the evening hours. So those two sessions in tandem, the ones that are highlighted in bold, are really just kind of open for anyone who's available at the library, or open to anyone that stops by purposefully. Then we have a few other sessions, which are more geared towards targeted audiences. Those are the senior center. We have, in conjunction with our meeting on Friday, we're going to send over an individual who will be at the senior center to do sign-ups around 10, say between 10 and 11 or so. And that will be for a session also on 10:30 at the senior center. That will be focused on that population, the senior population of the town. We'll have some of our transportation team there, and we'll be talking about any of the topics of master plan, or the comprehensive plan, excuse me, but believe that there may be some transportation concerns with that particular part of the population. And then we also have on the 29th, arranged with the youth center, a youth council meeting, which will be getting direct opinions from their, their youth council on the comprehensive plan and whatever, whatever it is they are interested in, the youth of the town, and be gathering their feedback on their ideas for what the town, what they would like to see the town sort of work on as they are growing up in the town, which will be an interesting perspective in a group which we have not heard from as much in this process today. So that's, that's very good. And then just to close us out, I touched on the small business session, but that will be on the 30th at the Chamber of Commerce. The space is smaller there, so we are trying to get people, that's why we went out and reached out to small businesses, because we want to have, focused on those direct stakeholders in the business community, and want to make sure that we fill, fill the available space with those stakeholders. So, yeah, go ahead.
So to participate at the senior center on the 30th, someone would have to sign up to do so on the 18th?
Not necessarily. That's, that's to help us get a feel for how many people, so we can better plan.
Can be drop-in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone who's available at the senior center on the 30th could attend the session.
Thank you.
So those are, I think, for the most part, that applies for any of the sessions, I would say, except for the youth council meeting, because there's certain sensitivities with meeting with the youth. We, our team is going to go through this process of core reforms and things like that. So we want to be protective of who's, who's in the room with the youth and the small businesses, as I said, just because the Chamber of Commerce conference room is, is a smaller space.
Very small.
So we hope, we hope through these sessions to help our team get a better understanding from, you know, the average Milford citizen and what they'd like to see, and integrate those comments and thoughts into the planning process. We also have, as I've mentioned, this is the flyer that I'll put up physically, and I have extra copies. If any of you know of a place that would be good to post it as well, and would want to take a copy and put it, would be appreciative of that effort. So this is primarily focused on the library sessions. And people can also register for those if they see fit, but they do not have to, and they can just show up or be in the space if they're already. And just to remind you all, we are also focusing on, we're trying very hard to get those details confirmed for this evening, so I could share it with you all, but then also through this recording, share it out more broadly. But we have not gotten the date exactly confirmed yet. We believe the date will likely be the 18th of November. We're confirming that venue, which will be a, hopefully, an area church, which we believe that both Spanish-speaking and Portuguese, Brazilian-speaking populations are, would be more comfortable with than, for example, coming to town. And then there will be a complimentary and similarly set-up English-speaking session hosted via Zoom, which is a preference we heard from people at the last public forum in the spring, and that will likely land on November 13th. Those two might flip-flop depending on the dates, but those are likely to be the two dates that we're, we're landing on. And as soon as we get those confirmed, we will also put together a quick flyer, that flyer translated as well, so we can circulate those to the populations that we're intending to hopefully host at the Spanish and Portuguese speaking session. In addition to all of that, we have put together a community survey, the second community survey of this process, and that is a pretty straightforward survey in which we have included the language of the draft vision statement and the language of the draft goals, and then have open comments for each of them. So we break it down paragraph by paragraph, as we went through it with you all on the vision statement, and ask for any suggestions to strengthen those paragraphs as people would read through the survey, and they can just add their open comments. And then we ask a question in terms of the scale of their reaction to the vision statement, how it aligns with their, what they would think would be the ideal vision statement, if it's kind of headed in the right direction or needs a lot more work. That will help us gauge how, how much of improvement we should be doing as we make these refinements. And then we also have, for each of the topic goals, a similar setup, where the goals are repeated in the survey, and then there's an open comment form for each of those goals. And people will have the ability to choose, select if they're interested in all the topics, or if they're just interested in transportation, then it will take them straight to that topic. And it will sort of expedite this survey process, so people don't feel it's as cumbersome if they just want to give feedback on a specific topic. Just described this, which is on the screen now. And then we do have a link and a QR code, which are live for the survey. And I would say the survey will be getting a few upgrades. It's live in English now. We're working on Spanish and Portuguese translations, which will be added into the survey as options that people can pull out as well. So as, as we are out and about at each of these sessions that we just talked through, we'll also be promoting the survey and the QR code and hand that out, so people can take it with them. If they don't have the time to speak to us then, they can at least give us feedback through that means. Any questions about how this is all shaping up for fall engagement? I think, I think it's falling into place. We feel a lot more comfortable now than we did last month with more of the details emerging. So we'll, we'll continue on that path. The, I would say, just in terms of how we're going to use that information, everything we collect over those sessions in the next month, we will compile as a kind of meta-set of notes and feedback information that we receive. We will share that back to you all, probably, we probably start to share it back in the next session at the beginning of November, just to give you an idea of the high-level ideas of what we've been hearing. And then we'll compile that with the November forum sessions and really bring you back a more substantial compilation of all, all that we've heard in the December meeting with you all. And at that point, the process will really begin pivoting from finishing up refinement of the goals and strengthening them based upon the feedback, but then pivot strongly towards the more detailed strategies and actions, which will occur, you know, populate underneath those goals. But we want to make sure we get the goals relatively aligned first before we do too much underneath them. All right. So next, we'll, I'll hand it over to Michael, who will lead us through the community facilities and services, and then we'll hopefully have a rich conversation. This is, just to remind you all, actually, I've got a slide here. So we're zeroing in on the final of the topics here. So we did housing last session, I think had a very good discussion about housing together. Community facilities and services is this, is this evening. Next, I don't know if we ever closed the loop. I communicated with Larry, but I'm not sure if I heard a confirmation. We are planning on a November 5th?
Yes.
Election date meeting. Okay. So that's good. So that will be cultural and historical resources. And we'll mostly, aside from giving you the high-level review of the themes we're, we're hearing from the conversations this month, we'll be focused on cultural and historical resources. So it'll be a relatively light meeting again, which was the intention there, and the sort of compromise doing it on the election day to keep us all moving forward. And then we would wrap up in, in the December session with natural environment and open space. And that would get us through each of the topics with a deep dive discussion, such as the ones we've been having. And tonight, we're on community, community services and facilities, and I'll let Michael take it from here.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you, committee members, for your time. My name's Michael Pierce, Municipal Services Specialist at MAPC. And the Community Services and Facilities chapter, as the name suggests, covers a pretty wide swath of both, both the town facilities and then, of course, the associated services that the town provides. And so the chapter looks, starts kind of high-level at the, at the town as an organization, at the government, you know, governance, communications. So to just kind of start us off, you know, the town has about 1,600 employees who report to 26 different department heads, as well as 28 elected and appointed boards, commissions, and committees, and then there are nine additional elected officials. And the major town facilities include the Town Hall, Memorial Hall, the library, of course, the police station, the Spruce Street and Bird Street fire stations, youth center, senior center, the Vernon Grove and North Purchase Street cemeteries, the wastewater treatment plant, and the transfer recycle station.
You had one there.
Oh, sorry. Please.
Water, the water treatment facility.
Oh, gotcha. Sorry. Gotcha.
Now owns the water department, so.
Gotcha. No, we will, we will certainly include that. And I, I should note, I mean, please feel free to, to point out anything you feel is missing, but just due to the nature of this section, like, you know, it will not, it will not include every single detail, and so we'll certainly be sure to, be sure that we go into that in the actual report, but.
I'll add on three more elected officials, too.
Oh, for, for the, the water commission?
Right.
Okay. I will, I will double-check, but I believe, I believe that that's included within the 28 boards, but I'll, I'll confirm that.
Do you want to put the schools as major town facilities, or?
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Yes, those, sorry, we'll, we'll be discussing the schools shortly. I kind of kept them in their own, their own subsection, but those are very much, very much considered in this chapter as well. But yeah, so starting, starting off with the, with the library, I also, I just want to note, in terms of some of the statistics in this slide show, that as of, as of the time I was putting together the existing conditions report that this was based on, the 2023 annual report was not published anywhere, at least not, not anywhere that I could access yet. And so, and I know that that's up now, so I just want to note that some of these stats need to be updated to the current year, and that will certainly be done shortly. I just didn't have time to do that before this, before putting together this presentation. So, so starting with the library, built in 1986, renovated 2007, 2008. It has a total collection of approximately 1.6 million items, though that includes the electronic items. I believe physical items are closer to 120,000, if I recall correctly. The library serves 75,000 patrons in 2022. Important to note, that number increased significantly in 2023, as, you know, as we've emerged from COVID. I believe it was 112,000 last year. And is open for 65 hours a week. And of note that it serves as a regional library for nearby towns, being the kind of largest library in the, in the immediate vicinity. It's served by two full, 22 full-time equivalent staff, consists of two librarians, six associate librarians, three supervisors, and a director. It's governed by a board of trustees, and is very heavily dependent on volunteers to run programs. Speaking of that, there's the dedicated ESL classroom, and additionally, two community rooms, which we understand hold about 200 people. And the ESL classroom hosts one beginner in, sorry, two beginner and one intermediate English classes, which they note are in high demand. And again, that was as of 2022. I'm not sure if there's been a change in those class offerings in the most recent year. We know that they are, as of the last time we spoke with the director, they're developing their next five-year strategic plan. My understanding is that that was due to be completed in October. I don't have the latest information if that's, if that's been completed, and perhaps you all, you all know more on that. And a lot of that focus was on downsizing the physical collection to kind of make more room and improve the works, work-study spaces, which they noted were being more heavily utilized. Then, of course, we have the, the senior center and the youth center, so we'll just go over those briefly. Senior center opened 2003, serves approximately 700 residents a month, through a variety of services, classes, prepared meals, the SHINE program. I know the local AARP affiliate operates outside, out of the, the senior center, and that the newsletter reaches about 3,000 households per, per month. And then, of course, the senior center van, which we all had the great opportunity to ride on our, I think, our first town tour. That provides medical and other in-town transit, and the center also connects seniors to out-of-town medical transit to Boston or Worcester. And that, that, the senior center is served by two full-time staff, five part-time positions, in addition to one social worker. And our understanding, and I believe this, this information was as of late spring, that there were plans for a full-time program coordinator to be added. And there's also an onsite nurse that visits twice per week. And then, and then, of course, the, the youth center housed in the, in the Armory, opened in 1998, and underwent a $5 million renovation funded by the town in 2016. And we understand that there was grant funding in place for the remaining media center renovation that needed to take place, and this was as of several months ago. And the free-after-school program serves approximately 630 youth with 140 daily participants, as well as a low-cost summer camp with about 100 families participating. And there are two food pantry programs that operate out of there as well, and they have some, some other auxiliary, like the winter walking hours for seniors in partnership with the senior center, and of course, rent out the, the space for private events. And that's served by three full-time staff, four part-time, and also largely dependent on volunteers. We'd heard the need or interest in a, a full, a full-time front desk staff member from some of the folks at the, at the youth center. And then, sorry, so now, now we're into schools, of course. And again, you know, I realize that there, there's a lot to cover in this, in this section, so I just want to, want to stress that, you know, this, this certainly isn't, isn't intended to be, you know, everything that we're including, but, but just some of the, some of the high points to, to discuss. Obviously, Milford, Milford has six schools. There are, and again, this data may be a year and a half old, but about approximately 354 teachers, with 700 total employees serving, I think the number now is actually closer to 4,520 some-odd students, with a student-to-teacher ratio of approximately 12.5 to 1, which is slightly above the state average, slightly. I think the state average is about 11.9 to 1, so about half, half a student there. Sorry, I lost my place here. So I think probably the, one of the most significant statistics is that there are, at this point, approximately 1,600 English-language learners among the student population, and 170 bilingual staff. And our understanding is that the number of, of English-language learners has increased by about five times over the past decade, so that's obviously a very significant number. The fiscal year 24 budget totaled approximately 75.4 million, with, I believe, about 46.8 million of that coming from state Chapter 70 funding. And I know that we've heard both from, from members of, you know, from the school superintendent, as well as, I believe, members of the school committee, that, you know, the sort of, the rising costs combined with the loss of the COVID-era funding have, you know, been a concern, while, while there haven't been any cuts in programming or staff yet. This sort of long-term fiscal situation is, is at least of, of some, some concern and something to, to take a closer look at. And then on the, on the infrastructure side, we heard pretty, pretty clearly that the kind of most, most significant pressing need was around Milford High School, and whether that will be, you know, renovated or rebuilt and, and that process. And we know that, that that's both been identified as the top infrastructure priority, and that it was successful in applying for the Massachusetts School Building Authority for that feasibility study this year, to kind of plan out the, the future of the high school and what that will look like, and that there is a, a committee in place now overseeing this, the feasibility Going on to...
Just consistent, school was, school was actually built in 73.
Oh, okay. My apologies. Thank you for that correction.
I was the last class to graduate from the old high school. That's why I know it that well.
Gotcha. Okay. No, thank you.
That might have been, if you were looking at data, that might have been when it was originally supposed to open.
Yeah, that, or, or could have been like, you know, groundbreaking, or something like, maybe the funding was appropriated.
It actually opened.
Gotcha. Okay. No, we'll, we'll definitely make note of that. Thank you. No, appreciate that. And, and then on, on public safety, I think that, so, I mean, just to start with, the Police Department consists of 50 sworn officers, again, as of about a year and a half ago, nine civilian dispatchers, and two administrative assistants. I know in 2022, the department responded to 54,500 calls for service. And my, my understanding, I don't believe the 2023 report provided the exact number of calls for service from the Police Department, but I recall that it is consistent with the number for 2022. I believe it was over 50,000. And that is a very significant increase from the number of calls in 2021 and in 2020, the 32,000 and 28,500. And so this is certainly, I think, an area of, an area of interest. I don't, at present, have a lot more details about... an area of, an area of interest. I don't, at present, have a lot more details about, you know, that, about that increase, what's, what that has been attributed to specifically. You know, obviously, also significant difference in, you know, calls for service for, for violent emergencies versus more, you know, more minor infractions or issues. But that was definitely, that's, that's definitely a data point that will require more, more digging into, I think. And then, the fire department consists of 45 uniformed personnel, operating out of the two, the Birch and Spruce Street Fire Stations. And the department received approximately 5,900 calls for service in 2022. I believe that number is held about the same for 2023 as well. So that's kind of the, the brief overview. And then, we have, usually in the chapter, and I apologize, this is not set up to, this is, this is, this will be much larger on the page in the, in the actual report in terms of the formatting. I realize it's not that, not that easy to see right here, but this includes most, if not all, of the town facilities, including Town Hall, all of the schools, the library, the public safety facilities, and then additional information on some of the, on the hospitals and medical centers, and also, I believe, food access resources as well. So grocery stores, drugstores, convenience stores, those are all indicated in smaller, smaller dots that I realize are not very, very visible on this, but will be, will be blown up on the actual, in the actual report, and we can certainly provide anyone who's interested in a higher-resolution image, if you want to study that more closely. And then, going down to, to water and sewer infrastructure, and I want to note, on this map, my, my understanding is that we have, we have not received the, correct me if I'm, if I'm off-base here, Josh, but I don't think we've received the data on stormwater infrastructure. Our, our understanding is that there may, there may be some, and if so, then we will certainly incorporate that into our map as well.
We've done, each done significant amount of work because of the pollution requirements in the Charles River watershed, so there should be at least some, some level of base mapping for the existing stormwater. I don't know how far it's gotten now, but there should, and I believe that's GIS, it's been compiled on GIS, so you should be able to get that from me.
I think we have, I don't know if we have it, but I know that there's data available for the points, like culverts, et cetera, but I don't know if, if the pipe system is mapped in the same way?
You know, I don't know. I, I know that he has done the, the discharge points and stuff. I thought there was some level of, of data on, on the, the network itself, but I could be wrong. So if that's as much as we got, that, that's where most of it, at least in a GIS format, would reside, either that or between that, or whatever Liz may have available. You know, certainly with the new subdivisions that went in over the past 30, 40 years, the, the network should be on the plans and may be available digitally as well.
We'll double-check that. Thank you.
For sure. Thank you. And then, so touching, touching briefly upon, upon kind of water, water sewer and stormwater. So the sewer department manages, manages the sewer system, which serves approximately 95% of residents and businesses, with most of the remaining being, being septic. There are approximately 60 miles of sewer pipe, 10 pump stations, and then, of course, the wastewater treatment plant in, in Hope Dale. The treatment plant was last upgraded in 1986, and it currently has approximately a 4 million gallon per day capacity, which I believe is, I don't think that capacity has changed since the, the previous comprehensive plan. Oh, sorry, I just lost my place there. So of note, over, over 50% of the sewer pipes, again, circa 2022 at least, over 50% of the sewer pipes were, were pre-1950, largely, largely clay pipes in, in various states of, of deterioration that have led to a variety of infiltration and overflow issues. And we know that there have been, been some efforts, like the, the sump pump program, to, to kind of, you know, replace those as, as able, but our understanding at least is that by, by and large, the, the sewer pipes are still quite, you know, quite old and in, in a little bit of a, of a state of deterioration. So certainly a, a high item of, of concern in terms of, in terms of priorities. Stormwater, of course, is treated separately and currently managed by the highway department. I think that a number of the town officials that we spoke to noted interest in hiring, in either hiring a stormwater engineer specifically to, to manage, to manage the stormwater system. And I, I think a couple had, had raised the possibility of, of having that as a new department or utility. Obviously, a, a bigger lift than, than simply having an engineer position. But I think that those are all topics of, of interest and discussion. And we know that recently, the town has been very focused on green stormwater infrastructure projects. And I think that has also been one of the, the driving impetuses for potentially having a dedicated stormwater engineer, so that they're able to, to kind of have that specialization and focus. And then, of course, the town has to, to, you know, continue to meet the requirements of the, of the MS4 permit. And, and that, you know, work continues on that, but that's another area where, you know, again, potentially specialized staff might, might be able to, to provide additional support, but, yeah. And then, transportation, and so this is, I'm sorry, didn't have room here, but transportation infrastructure is really the focus, the focus here. Obviously, we have our own, our separate transportation chapter, but this is just kind of specifically on the, on the infrastructure. There, there are approximately 240 miles of paved roadway, 22 signalized intersections. My understanding is that nearly all of those are fixed-time intersections, and we've certainly heard the need to upgrade some of those signals, particularly through the downtown corridor. I think that this, this...
They're not fixed time. They may not be working and running fixed time, because no one has ever gone to improve them, but the controllers actually function.
Okay.
With, with loops and, and are capable, but if, if they're running fixed time, it's probably because they're broke, which is...
Yeah, most of them, most of them run like...
Through the downtown corridor, they're all, they're all, they all have loops, because they were all done as part of the, the last state program that went through, and they, and they were actually...
Okay, okay, no.
But I, I'm, I'm thinking, almost all of them, there's very few in town that are fixed, that need to run as fixed time. There may be ones that are running as fixed time only because they've never been, that the loops have broken and they've never been upgraded or whatever, but most of them are, the, the controllers do work.
Okay, okay, gotcha. Then we'll, we'll go back here. This, yeah, it's, it's possible that, that my information here is, is outdated.
Well, the fact that they may need upgrading may be true, but I, you know, just in terms of state...
The fixed time, right, gotcha.
That's a different story.
Okay, okay.
Think of our, our working on that trigger kind of...
Gotcha. Okay, no, we'll, we'll go, we'll, we'll, we'll go back and, and make sure that we've got, we've got the most up-to-date information.
Well, the wrong...
Because I know that, I know that that's, that was a...
Yeah, you may, you may want to, you may want to have that conversation with them again, because depending on when you talk to them or not, I think we've done one, Ricky. There's been, it's been money set aside to do, to put cameras in at various intersections, mostly for accident, but they've actually done, they've actually tied some of those cameras in to, to the controllers, and they're using them in place to detect as a certain spot. So that just happened at the last town meeting, we, we had done that. So there has been some movement on improving the signalized, signalized intersections in town, so it probably would be good to have that conversation. That, that would actually be through the police chief.
Okay.
As to what he's done or hasn't done.
Gotcha. No, we'll, we'll certainly, we'll certainly go back and review that. And I, I think some of, some of what we were hearing, I, I know was from the fire department specifically on concerns...
I don't know how they're doing with autocomms and stuff, yeah. I don't know how they're working or whether they are or not, but...
But we'll, we'll make sure, we'll make sure that we've got the, yeah, that we've got the most recent data on that. And again, appreciate, appreciate your, your input here. Yeah, so that kind of covers the next point. And then, we've also certainly heard the, the just general improvement of street and sidewalk conditions has been identified as a, as a priority for folks. The highway department leads, leads the street and sidewalk maintenance. In 2022, they installed or replaced about 1,800 feet of curb, 2,000 feet of sidewalks, 16,000 feet of berm, and 49 streets and parking lots were resealed, along with the addition of 15 ADA accessible curb ramps. And one, one important point here that I, I wanted to note was that, you know, it's certainly, certainly pretty typical to utilize PCI or pavement conditions index as a means of prioritizing things like street repair, resealing. And as, as best we were able to find, the most recent PCI map, again, this was, at least that is, that is publicly accessible, was about 30 years old. That does not mean that there are, are not more recent ones, but if so, we have not been able to, to access those. So we just wanted to highlight, highlight pavement conditions index as kind of an important indicator and tool for the, the town to be able to prioritize that work.
Unless it was done within budget, there hasn't been any requests since that time for, for pavement conditions at town meeting.
Gotcha.
If there was money in the budget, I can't tell you if, if the highways committee did it or not, but outside, but it, it hasn't been done.
Gotcha. Okay, yeah, that, we just wanted, wanted, wanted to cite that, since that's a fairly, you know, given, given that the pavement condition was raised as a priority, having that PCI would be a, a very useful tool for addressing that. So going on to just kind of the, sorry, some of the, the major challenges, we've seen, obviously, the growing need to increase language accessibility for both students and for all residents, given the, the significant increase in folks who may be non-English speakers or non-native English speakers. And that is kind of, you know, across-the-board for, for all services. Facilities needs that we've, we've heard highlighted, in addition to the ones that, that I've gone over, include space limitations at Town Hall. We've certainly heard quite a bit about that. And then, probably kind of addressing the, the high school and however that plays out, as two of the, you know, maybe kind of big-ticket infrastructure needs that the town, town faces. And then, and then in, in other areas, obviously, the, addressing the, the aging sewer system, and then addressing those, the kind of traffic and transportation focus needs. And again, we'll, we'll certainly take another look at the, the information we'd received on the, on the signalized intersections and make sure that that's...
The sewer, you may want to, you may want to differentiate, because sewer, sewer department runs on an enterprise fund, so they fund themselves. So if there's infrastructure that's aging, it, you know, that budget is through them, so it needs to, you know, as we do this, it needs to be made clear as to where that money's coming from or not.
For sure, for sure.
Same thing with the water department, I believe, as we go forward. So you just need to be aware of that. If there's anything that comes up, the spot of water department, too, they've rolled enterprise funds.
Gotcha. Okay, yeah, no, duly noted, and we'll make sure to, we'll make sure that we treat them as such. Another, another item that I, that we wanted to bring up was just the general, the general approach to the capital improvement plan and process. And again, this is sort of going based on what, at least what is, is publicly available. The current capital improvement plan, I believe, was from 2019. And I know that it's, it's noted in the plan that it's to be updated on a yearly basis, on an annual basis. And to, to the best of our ability, we had not seen an updated version of that, you know, it did not seem to be updated since 2019. Certainly, if anyone has more, more information on that, we would be, would be happy to hear it, but I think that it also, it was also worth, worth noting that it, that it was quite a cursory, kind of short plan. I think it was, I think it was between 10 to 12 pages. And, you know, did not, did not go into a lot of depth on any of the, any of the infrastructure that it discussed.
I think to complement that, there's a process that the department heads work with the finance committee, which I'm part of, and I'm on the capital subcommittee. We've got a multi-year capital plan where the department heads signal the things they're going to need multiple years in advance, and we're all, we, we meet with them around the calendar and keep that live at all times, right? So that supports, you know, in our fiscal planning process, there's a part of the year we do capital, and there's a, a budget set aside for capital plans, and then, of course, things don't always fit in, and there's a process for how those would work, you know, if they fall off-cycle at the other town meeting. So there's, in addition to what you see out there is that document, there's, you know, pretty robust capital planning process that goes with department heads. It's a, you know, it's a huge Excel spreadsheet that has all the departments, and it's a multi-year plan that, you know, lays out people's needs well in advance, because we obviously can't afford people to surprise us with things too much, you know, so you really need to have things, you know, itemized out. If somebody needs a boiler, five years out, it's on the plan. If they need a dump truck, or if they need, you know, a leaf truck, five years out, like it's, it should be on the plan. And it, it hasn't, I mean, things move, things shuffle, because, you know, sometimes things break, and you have to deal with that, you know, as well, but there's, and then we can trade inside of the department's plans.
Gotcha. Do you know, is, is that document publicly available, or that's a strictly internal?
I'd be surprised if it's not on the website, but I can help you get it.
Okay, yeah, no, we'd definitely appreciate that. I, yeah, that...
So we just, we have a new website, you know, so I might not, maybe it hasn't made its way, but in, in the capital planning process, because it goes to town meeting, the town meeting members have to see these things. We try really hard to make sure that the, there's a certain list of questions that are answered, that are available for all town meeting members and residents to see. You can see the quotes that we got, and you can also see the plan, right? So we try to have that be very public. Maybe it's not as available as I thought it was with the new website, and I haven't looked for it on the site, because I get it through email, you know, pretty regularly.
Each town meeting, any project that's going to be looking for an appropriation will be on a town meeting website, so we go onto that section. So as Brand said, you should be able to see what they're looking for, how they base the cost of the appropriation they're asking for, and that type of thing, so.
Okay, yeah, we'll...
It is there.
We'll take another look. I, I also, yeah, I, I realize that in doing a lot of the research for the existing conditions report, that it kind of straddled, you know, when the, I think the new, the, the updated website went live, so what was it, sometime in, in May or June?
Yeah. That's all right. We'll talk offline, I can do you know, address it.
Yeah, we can certainly connect on that. But no, appreciate that. And, yeah, and, and, you know, again, maybe, maybe, you know, maybe, 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 maybe that's an area where, you know, it turns, it turns, it turns out that there is, there is enough publicly available information, but just kind of as it, as it stood from what we were able to find, we felt that that was an important area. find, we felt that that was an important area to highlight. And then finally, just, you know, again, because this, you know, this is the kind of broad, broad chapter to talk about it, I think just the, just the general challenge of rising costs to maintain, you know, a consistent quality of service and how the town chooses to address that, you know, obviously inevitable trade-offs between, between revenue and service You know, I realize that, you know, this can, this can be, you know, a politically fraught minefield, to put it mildly. And I think that, you know, our, our job obviously isn't, you know, isn't to try to force the town into any one, you know, solution, but just to be thinking about, thinking about those inevitable trade-offs and challenges and kind of what the, you know, what the long-term sustainability of its current service levels is, how will, how will the town meet those And, and really just kind of have that, you know, obviously it is, you know, it's, it's on the town to decide the best ways to meet those needs, but, but we, we just want to highlight that kind of inevitable challenge that will, that will continue going forward so as we.
Our department heads work with each other and they'll, as Brad knows, they'll still hold off on, on something because they need money somewhere else. The fire department has kicked back a number of times on renewing their engines and doing that, just to work with the, with the kind of, the finance committee does a great job working with them.
Yes, I think, I appreciate the kind words and we certainly try pretty hard and we, you know, even if you think about, we talked about a school coming, you know, so we are actively thinking about making sure we have stabilization funds for that and have room against the tax levy and with some taxpayer relief, which we're always trying to be ahead of this. But I think what's interesting to me in this part of the document, when you, when you get even more granular, is to distill the challenge into inflation versus rising population and service needs, right? So Chris was very quick to say schools are going up when he said, hey, 50, because the schools have been on the way up and the chapter 70 money's been up because of the needs and the changing needs of the student base. So if you think about us, if you looked at our history over the last decade, let's say, you'd see a huge raise, increase in number of students and the English learners and high need students, and then the chapter 70 money has gone up a lot with it. You'd also mention the fire department and the police department, the number of calls have gone up. So there's two different things kind of happening. One's inflation, and I'd love to be able to have this conversation distilled, inflation is separate from increased population and increased need, because I see those as having a lot of sort of tentacles to it. So some of the increased need comes with extra funding historically. And we've, if you look at our chapter 70 history, you'd see that we've gone up quite a bit because the state's recognizing that we have needs very appropriately too, by the way.
For sure. And I, I don't have all, all the numbers quite memorized off the top of my head, but I, and, but I think, for example, like the chapter 70 funding has increased somewhere on the order of maybe about 15 million over the past, over the past five years or so. And I think that the total budget for the schools has gone up, you know, beyond that. I think it's closer to 20 million, but I, again, I don't have those numbers perfectly memorized, but, so I think that's, that's one case where there, there has been an increase, but there, you know, there, there are still challenges as well in terms of keeping up with the total needed budget. But, but no, point, very well taken. And, and, and yes, obviously there's a, there's a distinction to be made between, you know, between the just general, general rate of inflation and, and the, and the specific, you know, increases and needs for specific services. And, you know, we'll, we'll be happy to kind of bifurcate that in our analysis as well to the, to the degree that we're, we're able to. I'm sorry, yeah, we can go to, right, so, so I think, again, these are, these are our sort of initial draft level goals. We had highlighted improving and updated the capital improvement processes and practices, but again, we can touch base offline about the specifics of that. And, and yeah, there, there may be more that, that I, I just wasn't able to ascertain from what was, what I was able to find on the website. I think continuing to evaluate current department structures and organization for efficient delivery of services. So, you know, talking about things like hiring the stormwater engineer versus, you know, whether, whether there's interest in creating a new department for that or a utility, looking at, looking at other areas where, you know, that we've heard interest in say, you know, having some joint like grant writing positions between say the youth center and the library and the senior center, you know, those kind of potential, potential areas. I think also I would just raise, and I know that some folks have raised the idea of having a consolidated department of public works, you know, that oversees all of the, you know, kind of centralizes the capital and infrastructure and facility needs for the town, has been something that's been discussed and contemplated. And so that would kind of fall, fall under that, that recommendation. Continued, or that goal, sorry. Continue to improve inclusivity and equitable access to town resources. And so that, that can include whether, whether that's looking at, you know, the sort of town hall specific resources. I know we'd heard interest from some of the, I think some of the immigrant focus groups in having something like a, you know, like a bilingual kind of liaison for town hall. And some of those, some of those, you know, kind of non-native English speakers had identified a variety of challenges or what they felt were challenges to, to kind of accessing town services. Then again, continuing to improve environmental sustainability and resiliency for town facilities, services and residents, obviously a pretty broad one, but one that will, will continue to be important and I think, you know, ties into things like the need to repair the sewer infrastructure as certainly a kind of high level one there. The need to, again, be able to, you know, whether, whether it's through hiring that stormwater engineer or some other, some other process, ensuring that the town has the kind of staff resources it needs to, to focus on, on green stormwater infrastructure. And then finally, continue to plan for long-term financial resiliency and sustainability. And again, just kind of tying into, into the various challenges around increased service needs, around inflation and, and being able to plan out for that. So that, that's about everything that I've got. So just some questions for, for you, and I know that obviously folks have already shared quite a bit, but, but, you know, just kind of anything in particular that strikes you? Any areas, you know, beyond the ones we've discussed that you'd like to see us focus on or dig a little more into? And what else should be part of that kind of long-term vision and goals for community services and facilities? And again, I realize that we've covered a lot of different topics here within that. You know, I feel like any, any, any one of them, we could delve into a lot more and certainly happy to hear your thoughts and priorities.
Just one minor thing, when you go, you mentioned that the maps were kind of small. When you go back and work on the, on the map of particularly with the schools, just take a look at, it looks like a couple of schools that sort of floated off their locations. So when you look at them, they're like, actually where they are in real life.
Oh, okay, gotcha, yeah.
It's pretty small and, but I use my iPad to zoom in, like.
Oh, thank you.
It's a minor thing and we can, we can help you offline with it, but.
Okay, no, we'll, we'll definitely make sure to.
We should have that right. The, I just had a couple of them, but the police department required a bomb and a number of calls and stuff. Were you able or do you think you're able to, going back to them, have the ability to maybe compartmentalize those, to try to get an idea of where those are? That's why I'm asking that. I mean, we, we spend, and I'm just looking at the, the number of fire public centers, significant amount of money on, on vehicles. And depending on where those are, you know, the traditional, to me, the traditional fire department, I think of how many fires we now have as to how many calls they go out for, for different reasons and, and what the traditional fire department looks like as opposed to what it may need to be as we move forward. To me, it, it would seem like smaller vehicles that provide certain types of equipment that may cost less than the traditional truck may be more appropriate as we move forward. And I'm not sure that that's, that may be different with the police department. I mean, maybe some of those calls are such that they don't need to take a Ford Explorer out with all the equipment that's in there, but they need to get somebody out there. So just to know what the types of calls are, I think could be a, could certainly be something that we would want to know moving forward in, in terms of how we fund those departments.
I think it's a good call for, for anybody who's listening and interested, there was actually a, in the last year or so, there was actually a request from the fire department for a small and an extra smaller truck for the same reason, but you're, you're, you're right, there's a lot more rescue calls and you don't necessarily need to bring the, the full fire truck, everything. And the department has been trying to pivot to that over years, but this would be a great opportunity to explore, you know, how other towns approach it and for this and for the police department and.
Well, it's also certainly as a plan as we move forward, considering this is probably going to be with us for 20 years, where we're trying to get to.
Totally agree.
Police chief and the fire chief can provide you with the breakdown, especially the fire chief. He can give you what were more emergency response calls as opposed to going to fight a fire or.
Gotcha, yeah, no.
If you reach out to Mark and Chief Tassino, the police chief, I'm sure they can get you started on breaking those numbers down to give you a better idea of how many calls and the nature and the type of calls.
For sure.
And they downsized on their last rescue truck. It's much smaller than the specially, specialized built one.
The ladder truck.
That we had before and the ladder, while the ladder truck is.
That's, a lot of that technology with the ladder truck, they downsized those in size. They're still able to, to get the same.
Would you rather put the miles on a smaller truck that costs?
No, that's what I'm saying, that's what, that's what I'm looking at. Same thing with the police department, maybe you don't need to send a cruiser that size out, maybe it can be a normal car, right? There's a lot of equipment that goes in there. Is it needed for every call or is there a more appropriate way? I, I'm not saying there is, I'm just saying it's something to look at. The only other one that I had was just a question. I was looking at sewer department and it says that 95% of the businesses and residents are, are on sewer. I was just somewhat, it may be right, I was just wondering where you got that number because it seems slightly high to me, knowing where, knowing the extent of the sewer, just in towns.
I believe, I believe, and I would need to go back and double check. I can, I can certainly, you know, provide you with that, but I think that was from one of the annual reports. I can, you know, I, I will, I will double check that though.
It may, it may be right, I'm just thinking in terms of area, I know it's not 95%, but the area that's not sewer tends to be large house lots. So it may be right, I'm just somewhat surprised, I didn't think it was quite that high, but.
Okay, no, we'll, we'll definitely double check that. Yeah, I believe it was from one of the annual reports, but I'll, I'll go back and make sure that that's.
Check with the sewer department too. Like the pipes, the clay pipes, they're talking about buying their own equipment to reline the pipes and everything to save the town money and do that. So I mean, this, if you talk to these, if you talk to these department heads, they're going to tell you a lot more than that annual report is.
Sure, sure, for sure.
Yeah, just, just in terms of that, just to touch base on outreach to department heads. So our team did an initial round of interviews, I think interviewed maybe 20, 20 plus, 20, somewhere between 20 and 30 of the municipal department heads, community heads, et cetera. We do plan to do a second round of those types of interviews with the goals, especially when we start getting, the goals are a little more set and we start getting down to strategies and actions, just because they'll know best what does or doesn't work, so we can ground truth, all that with them.
If you go to the sewer department, 1984, if you look at it right now, it looks like it was built last week. Maintenance. It's, it's, it's got to be the cleanest sewer plant. This is, this is, again, that's maintenance and preventive maintenance is the most important
Okay, yeah, no, we'll, we'll definitely, we'll definitely circle back around on that.
The way that stat's written too is focused on the population, not the land area. So I agree, like, it doesn't look like 95% on the map, but it might be 95% if you look at the density of the areas.
When you look at, you know, the goal of continuing to evaluate the current department structure, so, you know, as this process goes along, you get to the final report, do you look at saying, all right, it would be in Milford's best interest to create a, you know, a municipal department? Is that what the intent would be or would the intent to be just saying, you know, you could or you couldn't? Where's, I'm just kind of curious on where, where that recommendation goes.
I think, I think that's a tough one. I think most, we're not trying to like hit a hornet's nest with a, with a bat in this particular topic. So I think what we're responding to are what we've heard from a lot of interviews. And so I think those, like DPW department for, has been one of the examples. And I think we're still, we're still weighing.
Yes, so that goal is just based off of, of community input and not necessarily driving into looking at those departments and seeing where they're, where they're most efficient and where they could improve on their efficiency from a, from a consolidation. So if that is not the goal, then I understand that this is just driven off of what towns folks are saying, yeah.
Well, towns folks and, and staff, I think some of this is from staff as well.
And staff, and I would say, yes, so we're not doing a sort of detailed benchmarking of each department relative to like best practices or something like that. But I would say, based upon what we're hearing and what the strategies are, we, we are thinking about potentially what the context is in some other towns similarly sized, for example, what they do. And if, if Milford is an outlier relative to those practices, we can point that out.
Yeah.
And that definitely can inform a decision.
I just didn't know how far, how far is the detail you would go, that's all.
Yeah, I would, for something like that, I mean, I would expect you to probably be in the Milford could look at something like this. However, to make that decision, I think it would go in, you know, to make that decision properly, we'd need to go into much deeper analysis than, than this is meant to do.
Yeah, I don't think you're going to be giving specific recommendations like that. That wouldn't be my expectation from where I sit anyway.
Understood, and that's, yeah, I think we're on the same page.
Yeah, you're going to be more setting goals that could be, that could be completed and not necessarily. Right, because the goals, and again, I understand what you're doing with the goals, but the goals you are setting, it costs about $3 billion, but if you implemented them.
Yeah, I think this, this particular chapter is a tough one for a few reasons. That number, the first reason is that we're trying to get a view into a world which many people around this table have a better feel for all the details of what's going on in the town. So we're trying to see where a process like this can step out and back from those details and look at that 10-year horizon and maybe give you something on the radar that might not have been there otherwise. But it's also, this is a topic where it's as much, you know, the local politics and sensitivities as it is about like the technical analysis, whereas some other topics are more about the technical analysis. And so we were, I guess additionally cautious in this topic area because we don't want to cause issues where there, where there might not be an issue by someone seeing something in a report like this that was more about our trying to understand the local context as opposed to, you understand what I'm saying, but we, we're not trying to create problems.
You're like my five-year-old grandson, figuring out what he wants for Christmas.
Already, it's not even Halloween.
Other thoughts or questions about? Other thoughts or questions about what we presented tonight?
I got, this one's off, somewhat off-topic on that, but just happened. And I don't know how involved you are, Josh, with, I noticed there was grants available through the, I guess you'd call it the TAP program from MIPC. And I was just wondering if, along the way, what you are feeling is, are there areas that Milford could apply for that grant, based on what we're seeing and what you're seeing in doing this plan? You know, I just happened to notice that, and if there is something, then, you know, through Rick or whatever, if there's money to be had that can help us further certain areas of this plan outside of what we originally were planning on doing, that may be something that we would want to look at.
Yeah, we very much agree with that. I think that one of the things we like to see in terms of the grant-making that our agency is able to do is what we call implementation. So it's actually following on a comp plan like this, and if we have recommendations, for example, in the downtown, or recommendations around zoning, things of that, are within the sort of technical purview of our agency and expertise of our agency, we would be, you know, I think we'd look very favorably on application from Milton in the next grant cycle or the next grant.
Next one after we're done with this?
Yes, exactly. So that would be, there'll be recommendations in our write-up about very specific things that the town could do, you know, zoning a certain area or something like that. Then you could follow on, apply for that grant, and I think be in a very good position to get that grant as an implementation of this plan.
Okay.
The timing, not impossible for this current cycle, but the timing would be a little, the more detail of our recommendations like that will begin to emerge towards the end of this year, but if there's one that's really, if it's very clear and well-supported, we could probably think about an application for this cycle, but next cycle, I think, would be a little clearer.
Okay.
All right, so let me just wrap up, follow up on some next steps. So again, if people are interested, we do have an email list signup that people can take a look at, also the plan website. We continue to try to keep updated and up-to-date with all the various meetings and activities going on, so that's a resource for everyone. This is the more complicated version of all the moving parts, which we're keeping track of, and I think mostly tracking well with in terms of the overall approach. Here's our more bulleted next steps. So we'll be continuing to refine the goals, based upon the discussions that are happening this month, turning toward initial strategies as those begin to get firmed up, and then also thinking about improving the draft vision statement, which is a part of that work. Our next ad hoc committee meeting with you all will be November 5th, that's the evening of Election Day, at 7:00 PM in the space, and we'll primarily be focused on historical and cultural resources. And again, it will be, this session tonight qualifies as a relatively short one compared to some of our others, so it'll be a similarly timed session, where we'll focus mostly on historical and cultural, and have a little bit of the initial findings and the feedback to bring back. So that's what we have for you this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Make a motion to adjourn? Is there something else on you?
Second.
Moved in second to adjourn. Any further discussion? Usually don't here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, we need both.